We'd like to welcome everybody out. It is now really close to six o'clock and I'd like to, if I can't recognize the council members, we have Councilmember Tafoya, Councilmember Yeoman, Councilmember Burrell, Councilmember Saxton, and soon to be Councilmember Paul. We should indicate to you, we are live today. Sitting right up here on the right-hand side, mine, right-hand side, your left-hand side is video cameras, and so we're running this live, I think YouTube is where it is. If you ever have an interest in wanting to watch this unfold over the next series of city council meetings, get on our website, tap into that, and you can actually watch the video. Let's go ahead and we'll begin. We're going to allow and ask Councilmember Burrell to go ahead and give us a moment of silence and lead us, or help lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman Burrell.
Thank you for joining me in a moment of silence before we begin this meeting. Thank you. We'll turn the time over to Troop 370 and thank them for their service in leading us in the pledge tonight.
Color guard attention. Will the audience please rise? Color guard, forward march. Post the colors. The audience, please repeat the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Color guard dismissed.
Thank you, Troop 370.
Thank you. We have a busy schedule tonight, so we've got to work through some things. We'd like to begin on the consent items. These are items that deal primarily with our minutes. So, is there any changes, council, any changes, recommendations, or comments about the January 16th, 2018 city council meeting minutes?
No, Mayor, I'd like to make a proposal that we, I mean, approve the amendment. Let's start over. Mayor, I'd like to propose that we approve the minutes from January 16th as written.
Perfect. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, approved. Okay, we have a series of action items we'd like to work through. First, we're going to swear in City Councilmember Joe Paul. So, Joe, if you'll be down with the judge, we'll start that process. Thank you. Would you introduce a family that would be here to join you and friends?
Can we introduce first, or?
No, just make sure after.
Just repeat after me. I.
Aye.
State attorney.
Joe Paul.
Having been appointed to the office of City Council.
Having been appointed to the office of City Council.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will start, and that I will discharge my duties.
And that I will discharge my duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Speech. Please introduce. So, starting out, Sophie here, wife of almost 23 years. Have four children. Two of them are not with us tonight. They've led busy lives and scheduled. My eldest daughter Kendra is a sophomore at Weaver State University. My youngest daughter Kylie is a sophomore at Roy. She's a cheerleader there. And then I've got Trevin, or Treven, sorry. He was one of the ones who helped with the flag ceremony. And then Trevin. And then my sister. Who, I believe, since I was eight years old, Janet, and her husband Kerry. Thank you. A lot of friends in the audience, I don't know where to start, but I just appreciate the support from everybody and the opportunity to give back to the city and to serve, to help make a difference. Thank you.
Well done. Mayor, welcome aboard.
If, Councilmember Joe Paul, can we have Treven and Trevin come to the mic?
Yes.
So, Treven and Trevin, will you come to the mic for a sec?
That mic.
In the middle.
Okay, so I want to know one question. So, we put the speed limit sign down on your road, and I got a video of you guys racing your bike as fast as you can to see if you can register the speed sign, and I just want to know who's faster. You're faster? Okay, is that true? Okay, all right, thank you.
That was good, thanks.
Way to put him on the spot.
Chief, come on, please.
Mayor and council, thanks, appreciate your time tonight. As you know, we've had a lot of changes in the fire department as far as staffing goes, and I'm grateful and friendly to say that we are now completely fully staffed. Our, finally, our last full-time staff member that we picked up actually started yesterday. So, we're fully staffed. With that being said, we went through a lot of transitions, changes with chiefs, deputy chiefs, and captains, and firefighters, so I'm excited to swear in 11 new, either promoted firefighters from my staff, or newly hired firefighters from my staff. So, first off, just so everybody knows, firefighters are civil servants, we all know that. They follow standard operating policies, procedures of the fire service, and standard operating procedures of their department. They are there to prevent human suffering and death, to stabilize the incident, and prevent damage and loss of property. So, today I congratulate my guys, their family are here, so I like to call them up one by one. I'll introduce them and what their new position is, and then we'll swear them in, so. Got a full house. Leroy Leishman, he's the new deputy chief. He took my position.
Where do you want him?
Bring you right up front. Mike Hadley is our new captain. Congratulations to him. Ryan Law is one of our new engineers. Sarah Moore was promoted to paramedic. She had a family emergency and could not attend tonight at the last minute, so she wanted me to just let her know she apologizes for that. Ryland Jordan promoted the paramedic from our part-time ranks. Excited to have him. Brock Mahindo.
Is he on a call?
He's on a call. He's actually on duty tonight, and he's actually on a call, so. He's one of our new, our brand-new paramedics as well. Dave Kingsley. Promoted from part-time staff to a full-time firefighter AMT position. Tyler Jones. Tyler Jones is one of our new hires, brought into a firefighter position AMT as well. Tanner Russell is one of our new firefighter AMTs as well. Excited to have Tanner. Brady King is one of our new firefighters AMTs as well. And Colt Call started yesterday, is our newest firefighter. First day, so he's doing his first 48-hour shift. So, it's about, what, three-quarters of the way through?
That's right.
That's right. Glad to have him, one of our new firefighters AMTs as well. Anyway, I like, from me personally, I'd like to congratulate every one of you. We're proud to have you. These fine men and women, Sarah's not here, but these fine women and women are going to do a great job. They're great assets to Roy City, Roy City Fire Department, the citizens we serve and the communities we serve and protect every day. So, anyway, from me to you guys, congratulations and to your family, so, congratulations.
Thanks, Chief.
Just worry all at the same time, so, just repeat your own name, like you're everything. And also, don't give yourself a raise when I say what your position is, okay?
Mayor, can I interrupt just one second?
Please.
I got Brock Mahindo just walked in, so if I could bring him up. Brock, come on up. Thanks. He's the other paramedic, but he was on a call, so, thanks, Brock. Bring you up. Thanks. Sorry.
Thank you.
So, again, just repeat your own name, and then when I leave a little blank space, just repeat what your position is, okay? I, repeat your name. Having been appointed to the office of.
Having been appointed to the office of AMT.
Very good. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will start, and that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Counsel, any comments?
Lots of great-looking bunch of guys there. Yeah, that's going to serve the city well.
Welcome aboard.
Ryan.
I know, do I need more paint?
Okay, Jason, comments?
I'm just ready for the next action item, and you are.
Are you ready?
Yep, ready.
Okay. It has been proposed that Mr. Matt Andrews be appointed as a department head over management services.
So, Mayor and council, it is an honor and a pleasure to be able to present our accountant, Matt Andrews. I'm here for consideration from the mayor and council to, for the appointment and the nod to go ahead and approve Matt Andrews as our new finance director. Matt Andrews was hired in 2011 as the accountant for Roy City, so he has served in this position since 2011 for almost, for seven years now. He's worked directly under the finance director and has a wealth of knowledge, and he's, he's been super good to work with. And we did an application and a interview process for this position. It was opened internally, and we had two applicants. At that point, we interviewed both applicants, and it is my recommendation that we go ahead and appoint Matt Andrews as the, as the new finance director for Roy City, looking for, as this is a director position, council's consent.
Thank you. Comments, questions, council? Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve Matt Andrews for the finance director of Roy City.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay?
Okay, so at this point, we'll swear in Matt Andrews as the management services director, and it'll require a five-minute speech from him and to introduce his family and to tell us a little bit about the budget.
Okay, I.
Aye.
Deputy Daniel Andrews. Having been appointed to the office of management services director.
Having been appointed to the office of management services director.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge my duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity. With me tonight is my beautiful wife, Crystal, three of my four children. My oldest is not here, Kingston. I have Ruby, Stella, and Delilah, my baby, and then my older sister, Marie Andrews. I don't want.
Thank you, Matt. Welcome aboard. Okay, we have, we got the appointment of planning commissioners going tonight. I'd like to present to the council, for your vote, the following recommendations for the planning commission. Full-time members, Chris Collins, Samantha Bills. Alternate members, Ryan Cowley and Don Ashby, okay? Do I have a motion? Excuse me, do I have a motion to appoint Chris Collins to the planning commission?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do I have a motion to appoint Samantha Bills to the planning commission?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's approved. Do I have a motion to appoint Ryan Cowley to the planning commission?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do I have a motion to appoint Don Ashby to the planning? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect, thank you. Okay, and would you, the four of you, please stand up. We're going to swear you in as new planning commissioners.
I, repeat your name.
I, Ryan Cowley.
Having been appointed to the office of planning commission.
Having been appointed to the office of planning commission.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Welcome aboard, thank you. One last thing, if we can, before we get the, need, I'm going to make adjustment a little bit, the appointment of Mayor Pro Tem. The council has considered and recommended that Councilman Tafoya continue as the Mayor Pro Tem. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make the motion that we appoint Dave Tafoya as Mayor Pro Tem.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, Aaron, chief, please.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. It's my pleasure to nominate Carly Percival from the Police Department for the Roy City Employee of the Month for January of 2018. I'm going to ask her to come forward while I read her nomination letter. I would like to nominate Carly Percival for the Roy City Employee of the Month for January 2018. Carly is a records clerk for the Police Department. The records division of the Police Department consists of three employees, a records manager and two records clerks. It should be noted that the number of records clerks was reduced from three to two last year, and the workload of the records clerks was increased. In October of last year, both the records manager and the other records clerk went on maternity leave. This left Carly tasked with overseeing all functions of the records division for nearly three months. Although a temporary records clerk was hired to help with the burden, this left two people doing the work of three, with one of them being brand-new to the position. Carly took on this challenge with a positive attitude. She performed exceptionally well at managing the daily operations of the records division. The records manager is very appreciative that she was able to return from maternity leave with everything taken care of and no problems that needed to be fixed. For these reasons, it is my honor to nominate Carly Percival for the Roy City Employee of the Month for January 2018.
Thank you. Counsel, comments, questions? Okay, I have a motion. I have a motion, basically, do I have a motion to have Carly be the employee of the month for January 2018?
So moved.
And I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Congratulations, Carly.
Well done.
Carly, you got to have a speech. So, I got to say this about Carly, too, is she was at the fire department before, and it was really bitter when the police stole her from the fire department. But Carly is a, is a quality employee, and I know that she works hard, Aaron, and you guys are lucky to have her. We were lucky to have her at the fire department. So, Mayor and council, she's a great asset to our organization, so, thanks so much, Carly.
Thank you, Carly. Well done. Okay, chief, shall we talk about the interlocal agreement?
Absolutely. Mayor and council, good to see you again. Anyway, the, on, we just need a motion to approve the new interlocal cooperation agreement for paramedic aboard charges. The old agreement that we had in place had expired. Every five years, we renew it, so it's nothing really new. This is just the new updated agreement. Legal is looked at, and all the other departments have agreed, and it's ready to go, so it just needs your approval.
Okay, questions, comments, council? Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve resolution number 18-4.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second, a motion.
Roll call vote?
Councilmember Yeoman?
Aye.
Councilmember Tafoya?
Aye.
Councilmember Saxton?
Aye.
Councilmember Burrell?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Excellent, thanks, chief. You also have the next one, so if you can help us through that one?
I sure can. My pleasure. Mayor and council, again, this has been a project that's been long coming, so I'm actually really excited to be in front of you to go ahead and go over this tonight. So, this is our emergency, Roy City's Emergency Operations Plan. This has been an ongoing process. Jason started this before he left. It was, it was a priority of his, and then I kind of took it over when he left to make sure we, we got it done and got everything ready to go. I'm actually excited to be in front of you to let you know that it's done and it's ready, finally. So, we've had a lot of questions to come in from citizens on this, on our Emergency Operations Plan. The current one we had was extremely outdated, really didn't follow any national guidelines or anything. It was kind of put together, and a lot of the contacts and the way that we would handle a disaster or major conflict in our city, those have changed. So, this plan updates that, makes the changes, kind of puts together the, the support functions of the city if we were to establish an EOC or have a disaster, whether it's a, a small local disaster that would incorporate a neighborhood, or a large-scale disaster such as an earthquake or tornado, or major flood, something that, something to that event. But it outlines how we would implement the EOC and how we would run that if that was to take place. Just need your approval to accept pages 1 through 26. The main body of the EOP plan will be adopted. The other sections of the EOP plan are supporting documents that would not be adopted, though so we can make changes as we need to without having to re-adopt the whole plan. So, do you have any other questions with that?
Counsel, comments, questions?
No, it was very detailed. It really gave a lot of instruction to everybody, so I thought it was, it was very well done.
Yeah, I know Jeff worked hard on this, has done a great job on it. He finished what Jason couldn't do, so.
I had a lot of work to catch up on. It was a mess when I got it, so.
But it's very detailed, and a lot of work goes into it. The mayor made some great comments, and we implemented those changes, so, it's a good plan, great plan.
Yeah, did well, thank you.
Agreed.
Do I have a motion?
Mayor, make a motion that we approve ordinance number 18-3, approving the Roy City Emergency Operations Plan, pages 1 through 26.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call vote?
Councilmember Tafoya?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Yeoman?
Aye.
Councilmember Burrell?
Aye.
Councilmember Saxton?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Okay, Ross, please.
Mayor, council, on January 30th, we had a bid open for Safe Sidewalk Project on 1900 West from 4,000 to 3775, with the majority of the funds coming from a UDOT grant for safe sidewalks. So, I've just come to ask you to approve post-construction asphalt construction as low bid at $203,029.
Okay.
Do you have any questions on it?
Questions, comments?
Ross, have we had done business with these, this business before?
Yes, we have. And they did the trail also, on, the walking trail on Rio Grande there.
Okay, great.
And could you help, just for the audience, where we're, this is going to take place? Just describe it. The address is obviously on here, but just help us to describe where this is happening.
Basically, from that Sinclair Station on 1900 and 4,000 South, going down to 3775, on the west side of the route, where there is no curb gutter or sidewalk.
So, on the north side of the city, on 1900, you're going to go north with this sidewalk?
Yeah, and it's going to include some of the storm drain and all that through there, so.
Excellent.
Past the Hanson Farm.
I'm not sure it's going to get quite to the Hanson.
Not all the way down, not all the way down Hanson, but down to the end of the subdivision, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions, comment? Okay, do we have a motion?
Like, Mayor, let's go ahead and make a motion to adopt resolution number 18-5, approving the contract for 1900 West curb and gutter, gutter project, appointing post-asphalt and construction.
Perfect.
I'll second that.
Second, this is a roll call vote, okay?
Councilmember Saxton?
Aye.
Councilmember Burrell?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Tafoya?
Aye.
Councilmember Yeoman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Okay, consideration or request for approval of an alcohol beverage license. Jason, who's talking, this one?
So, on this, anytime that a business changes names, we have to do, we have to go through this whole process again, so, this is just approving. So, this is just approving an alcoholic beverage license for the gas station at 4395 South and 1900 West, and it has gone through all the departments, everybody has found that they're in compliance, and so we recommend at this time that they be granted that license, so it just needs to come for approval.
Okay. Questions, comments, Council?
Andy, we used to put on here what class license it is?
I remember we used to do that.
It's like Class B or something.
Okay, so just appropriate, may make sure it's appropriate for convenience store?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve alcohol beverage license for Express Fuel 8,002 Inc., located at 4395 South, 1900 West.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it's approved, thank you. Okay, we're gonna go into public hearing to discuss the general plan. Do I have a motion to go into a public hearing?
Mayor, I make a motion we go into a public hearing.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We're in public hearing, we're gonna talk specifically about the general plan, approximately at the location at 1920 West, 4400 South. Steve, are you willing to kinda talk this a little bit and then we'll open up for comments?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Willing is a strong word, but I will do that. As mentioned, this is an application to amend the general plan here at 1920 West, 4400 South. Also to amend the zoning map at the same location, this general plan would be amended from medium-density single-family residents to very-high-density multifamily residents, and then the rezone would take, would be from R18, single-family residents to R4 multifamily. The applicant is just looking to convert it to a duplex or a two-family dwelling. They like to do a triplex, but they're 30 square feet short of a triplex, so they could only do two-family. It is unsure if they would demolish the existing building and garage and build new or if just add on an addition, or just convert the basement to an apartment, it's really unsure which one it is. They didn't wanna spend a lot of money on engineering and design of the building if they weren't gonna get the rezone. They did have a, we did have a Planning Commission public hearing on January 9th. The comments that were, that are in the report are from those that came to the meeting, and you can read that within your staff report. The concern that really comes is when you start looking at the general plan aspect, this being the map of there, it does call for, again, the corner to be commercial on the northwest, southwest, and north, or southeast, to be commercial, but the property that's in purple is to remain as medium-density, single-family residential. So, by changing that, you would have just a zone or designation, a single parcel all by itself with no other parcels around it. The zoning map is a little different, it doesn't necessarily conform to what the general plan talks about. The general, the zoning map here in pink is commercial, that which is in brown is multifamily, and the yellow is single-family R18. The concern would be, in this case, is if this property is rezoned to R4, it would be contiguous to an R4 zone, but it would jump a major road, which is 4400 South, and then open up the northern part of that. One thing that former Planning Commission Judy Kirch had mentioned as she came in was that years passed, both the Planning Commission and City Council looked at it as 4400 South should just be that natural border and nothing going north to be multifamily. So, during the Planning Commission's aspect, they did look at it, they did recommend denial, both of the general plan amendment and the rezone request, staff were to recommend the same thing, a denial.
This is open to, thank you, Steve.
Any questions that I can entertain now?
Okay. This is open to public comments, please, if you have a comment on this property, please step up at the microphone, give us your name and your address. It's good seeing you again.
We have got to buy a better mic, we cannot hear you guys at all, even if there was a handheld or something, it would be better. Jenny Kirch, 1920 West, 4335 South. Basically, my house is just through the church's parking lot. Years ago, the house next to it, to the west, they wanted to put a triplex in there, and we discovered that when they were using the footings to figure out how many square feet, they actually had to go out into the street to do it. This is a very tight area to even consider putting a duplex in, and I have talked to quite a few, I don't know what it is, it's not over here. Maybe I fixed it, or broke it, one of the two. Well, I can talk pretty loud, okay.
Use that schoolteacher voice.
Anyway, when it was first, I can't remember saying, when it was first noticed, it was noticed as an R2, and then we were considering that because down that road are houses that have a basement that have widows in it, and maybe they could have someone live in the basement, because our ordinance right now says it has to be a family member that rents from you if you have a basement. Well, that whole area there has houses that could go that way, and I am concerned that one, that is very tight to get a duplex in there, and I don't think it's appropriate. Two, the general plan for as many years as I served on the commission and before that had identified that as an R18, and as not, down the road, maybe, commercial. We do know that the new 75, 74, 75 townhouse rental is going to go in, just south of that. But 4400 is a natural barrier between the R18 houses and the R4. If this was gonna be considered for an R2, and I know Steve has told me at 7,500 square feet, whether it's R4 or R2, but the potential for mushrooming throughout that area is, I think, greater than we realize. The house that's built right next to it is a beautiful, single-family home, and they were here last time and their comments are in their notes. But the footing there and how tight that would have to be to get two separate duplexes in there, a duplex, I should say, is not something that our neighborhood feels like would help our neighborhood. And again, we as commissioners and we as councilpeople looked at this before and felt like that was the natural barrier, so I hope you guys would consider it. I really wish to seeing family the best, but it's just a single-family home with a really nice garage, better than mine.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else would like to comment? Okay, seeing none, make a motion to go out of public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
Do I have a second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Council, comments?
I have a question about the parking. I have a question about the parking, I mean, if we have a two-family dwelling there, that could say two to four cars.
Correct.
Is, is...
The ordinance would require two-car parking for each unit, so they would have to come in with a design showing how they're gonna satisfy the parking requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I think it's been stated pretty well clear from not only Jeannie but also our own staff, 4400's always been a natural barrier right there, and it does make sense to keep it that way. Technically, you could say it's spot zoning just to throw the R4 right there, and it just doesn't fit, and with that, I think it's proper to deny this request when the time comes if there's more comments.
I was on the Planning Commission at the time and listened to all the comments and I voted against it and would say the same thing at this point, doesn't make sense.
I just walked the property this evening and talked to a gentleman that lives two houses down, and he was totally against it, and he said it would crowd the backyard of his neighbor if it was put in. I guess that would be the home just west of it, right?
Even if it's an R4, it still has a rear yard setback of 25, just similar to the R18 zone of the single-family home, so pushing against the property lines wouldn't change anything. Again, it would just be the number of cars that would be on the property versus anything else, so. I think the other dilemma is if you open it up, for one, you set a precedence to where that whole neighborhood, what's stopping, that everybody could come in and request the same thing, and injustice to the people that bought a property of a certain stature ought to stay that way.
We have plenty going in just to the south of it coming, so we have it all covered there, so. With that, there's no more comments, I would motion that we deny the request to amend the general plan.
Second that.
Okay. This is a, that's actually, should be a roll call vote.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Saxton?
Aye.
Councilmember Burrell?
Aye.
Councilmember Yeoman?
Is that a motion to deny?
Cause we're motioning to deny.
Motion to deny.
Yeah, so it's aye. Councilmember Tafoya?
Aye.
Okay. With that, then, we don't really need to address the other one, cause we're not changing, obviously, the zoning map. Thank you, Steve.
Steve, can you unplug your computer, Mark said that that should fix the speaker.
Okay. Definitely loud. This is our public comment period, if you have something you'd like to talk about, anything you'd like to talk about, please come up to the mic, give us your name and address. Open to comments, thoughts, ideas.
Sorry, I know this is one of the few forums we do, we need to do something about the website. I simply wanted to know what could go in the recycling can, cause I wanted to check again, and a lot of places are commingled, and ours is very limited to commingle, it's very specific, and it is a, it's hard to find it. I bring up Riverdale's site and over here is a list with all the things that the people would want to know. I simply wanted to know what day they were gonna pick up the garbage can, I finally found the recycling schedule, and I just think that something needs to be done. The navigation on that site, I understand it looks good, and I know people worked really hard on it, but it's hard for us, as citizens, to find the information that we need, there should be a link that's easy that says garbage or recycling. I shouldn't have to figure out what department it's under and find it there. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
I got that, Mayor.
Okay. Any other comments, ideas, thoughts?
I am, I've been a little bit concerned, oh, sorry, I'm Brett Hubbard, do you need my address?
Yes.
3797 West, 6,000 South.
Thank you.
And west of 3,500, on 6,000, the speed limit drops down to 25 miles an hour, but the road is so wide there that I think either people don't realize that it's 25 or they don't realize how fast they're going, but that is an area where I have found excessive speeding, and it's a concern that I have. I don't know different ways to solve this, but it's a pretty serious problem, and I have young kids, I have a three-and-a-half-year-old, and we're concerned about letting him play outside because we don't have a fully fenced yard, and we're scared of letting him go outside so that he can't run out front and run into the road, and so it's a pretty serious concern that I have with the speed limit being 25 miles an hour there.
Okay. Council, comments, thoughts?
No, it looks like, Aaron, you got it, went ahead and got that information, so. Okay, perfect.
Thanks, Aaron. Okay. Anything else? Okay, we'll move on. We have a presentation from the National League of Cities, and, there he is, thank you.
Thank you, everyone, appreciate you having me here. All right, thank you. My name is Dennis Lyon, I'm with the National League of Cities Service Line Program. We are the only service line program that's endorsed by the National League of Cities, and I'm here today, basically, to share a solution with you. The National League of Cities had been tasked with finding a solution for private infrastructure, the deterioration of private infrastructure by many of its member partners, and we were actually the solution that they chose. Here, I just have a bit of information on a recent Harris poll that we had commissioned, and you can certainly read through this and see some of yourself, for yourself, as to how Americans describe their current state of household finance, it's on. What I'd like to focus on is really that last point, which I think is the most important. Eighty percent of respondents to this survey, either strongly or somewhat agree with the statement that local community government should be responsible for educating homeowners about their external water lines or sewer lines on the property, meaning the lines they're financially responsible for. Many homeowners don't understand that the city's not responsible for that, they don't understand that their homeowner's insurance won't cover it as well. So, basically, this is what they would be responsible for out of their own pocket, they would like for their local government to let them know, you're responsible for this, so they know that ahead of time. I work for a company called Utility Service Partners, we're the administrator of this program. Why choose us to be able to make this program available to your residents? The experience that we have, we've been offering these protections for 15 years, the reputation that we have, over the last 10 years running, we've maintained a customer satisfaction rating of 95 percent or higher, and the partnership, we form a partnership with your community in order to make this program available. We're the only company that provides these types of services that will only do so with your permission, if you don't give your permission, we won't make it available. So, we work with you to make sure that we're offering this right for your community. Some of the program benefits, again, as I mentioned, we're the only service line program endorsed by the National League of Cities. What we do is we help address the public housing issue of aging underground infrastructure, excuse me. So, really, the way to think of us first and foremost is a free public awareness campaign for the city. We mail a letter to your residents, educating them as to what their responsibilities are for those lines, and then we make available to them voluntary protection that they can participate in to take care of those issues should they occur. There's absolutely no cost to the municipality participate, there are no public funds used. We offer this program to your community as a complete turnkey approach, so we administer all aspects, we take care of the marketing, the billing, the claims, and customer service. Not only is there no cost to the municipality, there's also an ongoing revenue stream for the municipality that's a component of this program. You can either choose to participate in that or some communities decline it. Those who choose to participate will use that revenue stream to do things like set up a, set up a program to help offset the cost of a water bill if someone has a leak, set up a utility program for individuals of lower income that struggle paying their utilities month-to-month, a lot of communities have a lot of seniors that are struggling in that regard. I believe it's forum here in Utah that actually uses that revenue, they donate it to a local charity, excuse me. Some cities will use it towards the payment of their state league dues or their National League of Cities dues. If you pass on that revenue, what we do then is reduce what the homeowner would pay to participate in the coverage as a direct correlation.
Dennis, can you explain the revenue stream again, how it works?
How it works?
Yes.
Okay. The way that works, excuse me, is for every paid warranty contract that someone participates in, the city would receive 50... the city would receive fifty cents. So let's say for example, well, we offer water line, sewer line, and in-home plumbing protection. So let's say a homeowner were to participate in all three of those programs. That would be a dollar fifty per month that the city would receive that's paid out every January in the form of royalty. So that's where you can choose to use those finances or that revenue for improvement of your own public infrastructure or anything in your community. Or if you were to pass on that, that same fifty cents that the city would have received would come off of what the homeowner would pay for that. So again, like I mentioned, it's a free public awareness campaign to educate homeowners about what their lateral line responsibilities are. It explains to the homeowners very clearly that it's a program that's offered by a company outside of the city through a partnership with the city and not by the city itself. For those who choose to participate, they get peace of mind knowing that should something happen with these lines, that with one toll-free phone call to us, we have two call centers that are both based in the United States. One is just outside of Pittsburgh, one is in Chatham, Tennessee. They're available twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, every single day of the year. And we dispatch a reputable local area contractor. So we use contractors from your area. Two ways we can go about getting the contractors that we use. Often times, cities like to provide a list of contractors that they know are reputable to be able to do these types of repairs. Sometimes cities don't want to get involved. In that case, we have our own vetting process. So we'll reach out to local contractors and find out their level of interest. And once we find ones that are interested, we'll make sure that they're licensed, that they're bonded, that they're insured, that they have all the equipment necessary to make these types of repairs, that they don't have any complaints with the Better Business Bureau. And then we'll go a step further and we even administer background checks and drug screens on these individuals to make sure that your residents are comfortable with these folks coming to their homes. So there's two benefits to using those local contractors. One is they're from here, they know the codes, they know what permits they're going to be able to need to pull to do these repairs properly. The other benefit is the money then stays within the local economy. So there's no financial transaction between a homeowner and our company when it comes to these repairs. So somebody's not paying for their repairs and then waiting for a check to be reimbursed. The transaction is between us and the contractor directly. So that's very convenient for your homeowners and property. As far as those contractors go, our policy with them is when we dispatch them, they're to be in contact with the homeowner within one hour and they're to be on-site within twenty-four hours to assess the damage. Obviously, if it's a major emergency, we're going to be in the machine. Excuse me, as I said, I got to the end there, I apologize. I'm going to go over the way the protection works a little bit. So the sewer lateral wiring coverage and the water coverage works the same, so I'm just going to cover that at once. So what a homeowner receives for protection for a leaking, clog, or broken water on sewer line from the point of connection to the home, this also includes clogs, tree root penetration, or even thawing of frozen external water line. They get up to eight thousand five hundred dollars of coverage per repair incident. So that's something that sets us apart from other companies that offer this type of coverage. It, ours is provided on a pro-repair basis, so that same eight thousand five hundred dollars is available each and every time there's an issue for a homeowner. There are no annual or lifetime limits. There are no deductibles. And what's really important is there are no service fees. The reason we set our coverage up that way is we didn't want even a nominal service fee of fifty dollars or so to deter someone from having an issue taken care of immediately. There are also no forms or paperwork for them to fill out because everything is prepared by the contractor. Again, twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five availability. And repairs are also made by the local contractors again. I mentioned we also offer the indoor plumbing and drainage coverage. This is protected for all in-home water and sewer lines and drain lines that are inside the home after the point of entry. This would give them up to three thousand dollars of coverage per repair incident. So again, it's on a per-incident basis, three thousand dollars they have to pay every time. This is for broken, leaking, crack, water sewer or drain lines. And this is even underneath a slab or embedded in the basement floor as well. And even repair of clogged toilets, that's included. Again, no annual or lifetime limits, no deductibles, no service fees, no forms, no paperwork. Same availability, repairs made by the local contractors. As I said, as our marketing approach, no public funds needed, no marketing or distribution or administration of the program in any way, shape, or form. We do only market by direct mail, so there's no concerns about door-to-door or tell marketing. We're not going to harass your residents. We would never mail anything without your review and approval of that marketing material before each and every mailing campaign. So basically, we have a letter that we provide to the city and say, this is what we intend to mail. Is this acceptable to you? Do you have any suggestions for changes to it before we would send it out? Once you give your approval, we would send it. If you don't approve, we don't send it. It's right in the agreement that we would have with the city. We are limited to free mailing campaigns per year, so we're not even going to vet which your residents will correct now. Again, the marketing group, which says the city does not provide, the program is provided by us. All information directs them to contact us with any questions that they have. And participation is completely voluntary for the homeowner. Nobody is automatically enrolled. Nobody is compelled to enroll. Do it their own free will. There's three different ways that they can enroll, as you see. Call, or remember, they can respond to the mailing, they can go all the way up. Currently, we have over five hundred municipal partners in thirty-seven states, including three in the state of Utah. So currently, Clearfield, Orem, and Salt Lake City are participating in the program. That information below might be a little bit dated because I think there are more enrollments and more claims that are, you know, that's not completely up to date. As a matter of fact, I have some recent claims numbers for Orem. I compare Orem because I show the median aid, or the median year of home built in Roy is nineteen eighty. Orem is nineteen seventy-nine. In the last twelve months, we did a hundred and one water and sewer jobs in Orem and paid out ninety-one thousand dollars in claims. So that's money that would have come out of a homeowner's pocket to make those repairs that need repair for them.
How many subscribers do you have?
I'm sorry?
How many subscribers in Orem?
Um, I don't know if I have that information right here with me. I could get that information for you.
I talked to Mayor Mark Shepherd about this and he told me they had about fifty percent of their residents taking the program.
Oh, okay. Well, that's good. I'd have to look at those numbers to be sure, but no, that's good news. I can also say that Steve Downs, the deputy city manager of Orem, is a big advocate of the program as well. So if anybody wanted to speak with him, he speaks very favorably.
Hey, Dennis, what, how much does it cost the resident?
If the city were to participate in the revenue stream, it would be five seventy-five per month for the water, seven seventy-five per month for the sewer, and nine ninety-nine per month for the in-home plumbing and drain coverage. So less than twenty-five dollars a month. We don't do long-term contracts. Everything is month-to-month, so nobody gets locked into any kind of a program that they don't want to be a part of. They can come and go at any time. There is no pre-inspection of a home for somebody to participate. There's a thirty-day waiting period. So if you call in and decide you want to participate in the coverage after thirty days, the government begins, and nobody's going to come to your house and look around and see if you've got some kind of pre-existing condition.
And how much less is it if we don't participate in the revenue?
Each of those would go down by fifty cents.
So Mr. Roper, raise your hand. Mr. Roper has an issue. He's one of our Roy residents and let's say he, so, and Ross, help me with this. We take water to the house, correct? Okay, so from the meter to their house, they're responsible for it. So Mr. Roper has a water issue and he can't fix it. So he'll call you guys. Can you just work us, walk us through the process for Mr. Roper?
Correct. Yes, he would call us. We would contact the local contractor who would then be responsible for making contact with you within an hour. Probably ask you some questions to kind of assess the level of emergency or situation. And depending on what that is, be on-site within twenty-four hours to assess damage and start the repairs.
And you'll fix up to eight thousand dollars?
Up to eight thousand five hundred dollars. And that does also include, I forgot to mention this, that does also include coverage for public street and sidewalk cutting if either of that is necessary. The repairs are done as quickly as they can be performed. I mean, obviously, it's going to be a bathroom, how extensive, you know, how much of the room you're going to have to go in there. That's the thing, the sewer line issues tend to be more common. But they're usually clogs and tree root stains that can shoot a brick in the paint for water cycles and hair can be infected and water, you're almost always building. But, I mean, they're done in a timely manner. But as I said, we bring in a ninety-five percent customer satisfaction and the last thing we're doing is we make sure we do what we say we do.
What about existing conditions, Dennis? Say somebody, homeowner says, I had a leak for a long time, I need it fixed. How does that play?
If we don't know about it, it's covered. You know, there's no pre-inspection. So the only way I could see that happening is if the contractor were to tell us, yeah, this was, you know, this was already in place. But I can't imagine a contractor with ties to a local community would divulge that.
Did you say there's a thirty-day grace period?
Yes, after thirty days. So basically, that ensures if you have a major breakage, you really can't wait thirty days. Yeah, you really can't wait thirty days on average if you have a slow leak. You know, and we know people do it. So really, what it is, is the partnership that we form with the community allows us to offer better benefits at a lower price, which, excuse me, gives us an economies of scale so that we're able to absorb things like that. It's the reality of it.
So Mayor, if I can, our Public Works Director, Dennis Ross Oliver, him and I were talking about this program. He's been involved in one of these presentations a couple of years ago. Ross, what's your opinion for the residents for this program? Yeah. And I like that the residents can opt in or they don't, or they can opt out. They don't have to do it and there's no pressure. And if they want any additional insurance coverage on their home and there's an issue. I mean, we had the construction in that forty-four hundred south there, remember?
The gentleman didn't have enough PSI.
Yeah, this would have been a, yeah.
An option for it.
So, I mean, just an option, but like he said, it's no cost to the city. This isn't a city-sponsored thing. It's, we met Dennis in Charlotte at the National Leagues Conference and got talking with them. And he said he'd love to come out, you know, and just kind of educate the council and maybe some of the residents, but, so.
Dennis, if a citizen signs up, is it just month-to-month? They can get out whenever they want? They don't have to sign a year contract or anything, is that right?
Correct.
What are your payment options? Like, is it?
A check, credit card.
Monthly billing?
Yeah, you can set up monthly billing. I mean, we do everything month-to-month, so it's all monthly billing. You can set up a recurring payment if you wanted to. You could pay a year in advance. There's not a discount at this time for paying a year in advance. But a lot of folks who don't have any plans of, you know, leaving the protection will do that. So we're really flexible in all of those aspects.
Thank you.
Okay. Dennis, obviously, you gave us a lot to think about here. What are you looking for from the council at this point? What are you, are you looking for a go-no-go decision tonight? Are you saying, should we take an opportunity to look at this a little, little clearer? Maybe do a little research? What are you looking for from the council?
I would think that you would probably want to do a bit of research, maybe discussing with some of the cities here in Utah as to their experience with the program. And the reason I say that is because I don't want a city to ever feel like it's something that they made a rushed decision one way or the other. And then after the fact, I mean, obviously, if you were to say no, it's easier to say yes later, but the reverse is a little more difficult, you know, to say yes and, oh, well, no, we don't want to be involved in this. It's not that we're not going to let you out, of course, but it's just more difficult to go back on something once you commit to it, obviously.
Well, I guess my comment, Dennis, would be kind of like this. Let's assume for a second that the council says the city really doesn't necessarily find any value to us to do that. But there's roughly eight thousand homes. Why would you not want to make contact to eight thousand homes and see if they have an interest, regardless of whether the city finds any value in it or not?
That's a very fair question. The reason we formed the partnership is it legitimizes the program in the eyes of the residents.
Okay.
Because they recognize that the city is involved with this. So basically, what you're saying is we have vetted this program. We've looked into it. And we feel comfortable telling you, if you would like to participate in this, you can.
Okay.
Some of those other companies that just direct mail without the involvement in the partnership of the city, that's where you tend to run into some issues.
Okay. Yeah, that's a good comment.
Yeah. The coverage isn't always customized to specifically what the residents are responsible for. And you ultimately get those calls because somebody signed up with some other company that the city wasn't even aware of. Hey, this company said they were going to fix this. And now they haven't.
Okay. You're really looking, it's an endorsement from the city to say, hey?
More or less, yes. Yeah, just to say, hey, we've looked at this and we feel comfortable telling you that, you know, this is a good program.
Okay.
Do your own research, but we've done ours and we feel good about this program.
Okay.
And we've had the National League of Cities endorsement since two thousand and ten.
Oh, have you?
So we've been doing this for a while with their, with their name attached to it.
Oh. Okay. Other comments, council?
I think we could put on as a follow-up item to make sure that we've done our research and maybe thought about it and, you know, maybe called some other cities.
What would be the step if we decided, say, okay, yes, we do this? What would we have to do with you?
Uh, there's a marketing agreement. I don't recall, did I provide you with a marketing agreement or just the term sheet?
In the packet?
In the packet that I have here is just the term sheet. Okay. So typically, the next step is I would provide a marketing agreement. So the city attorney could look it over and see the language that indemnifies the city and holds harmless, and also contains the terms and conditions and so on. You're, of course, welcome to make any suggestions or modifications to that agreement. It's not set in stone. So I could provide that to Mr. Paulson. You could provide it to the city attorney. And then if it's something you decide to go forward with, you would basically vote to approve, sign the marketing agreement, return to us, we execute the agreement, and then we start the process of
Getting the word out.
Say, here's the letter we intend to mail out.
Okay.
So Mr. Mayor, if we can, I think Councilmember Yeoman has a great point. Let's just put it on the items for follow-up. We'll work directly with Dennis and we'll get some of those legal documents, let legal look at it. Meanwhile, we can kind of reach out to Clearfield, Orem, and see kind of how their, you know, their take is on it and what does some of their residents say, and then we can bring it back to Dennis.
Everybody feel pretty comfortable with that approach?
Yeah.
Then, are you the conduit then, Jason?
Sure. Yep.
So the tasking, I think it will take from this, if we would, is that each one of us have a packet. Please read through the packet. If you have questions, direct those back to Jason. And then possibly the next city council meeting, we'll bring it up and decide our next step.
And my contact information is in there, so you can reach out to me directly.
Okay.
Do we have contacts for Clearfield and Orem?
Yeah.
I do for Orem. Clearfield I don't have with me, but I can provide. But for Orem, it's Steve Downs. He's the deputy city manager. And he's at eight oh one, two two nine, seven one, one five.
Okay. Perfect.
And then we can get with Mayor Shepherd with Clearfield.
Yeah, with Clearfield. Okay. Any other comments, council? Thank you, Dennis. I appreciate this. Good information.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you having me. I always love coming to this state, flying over those mountains. Something I never retired.
We just wish there was a little more snow up there, Dennis, to be honest with you.
Well, there's plenty for me to see. I was real happy with it. It never disappoints, I'll tell you that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. City managers report. Jason?
Okay, I got a lot, so I'll get through it really quick. But we got a lot going on. And if you want, I can kind of tag-team some of the items for follow-up as well, so I'm not being redundant here. Bathroom remodels starts February seventeenth. So that's the two bathrooms right here in our city hall that are going to be remodeled. It's going to take about three weeks to do. Our, working with Matt, the finance director, we're ahead of schedule on budgets. We do have the budgets out to all the departments. We do have the budgets out to all the department heads. It is due back to us on Friday, and then the department heads on March thirteenth and fourteenth are going to do a little retreat. We're going to do the budget all collectively together and not one-on-one, so everybody will be in the same room. You guys have your budgets from the mayor, so you guys will do your budget, we'll do our budget, and then we'll bring them together, and then we'll meet as a council. But this way, we, we've kind of figured, in a meeting with the department heads, this would be a lot more transparent than one-on-one visits with the, with the city manager and the finance director. If we do it collectively together, so everybody in the group sees, okay, what is our police needs, what are our park needs, and we can do the budget together, so it's all transparent. So, when we bring you a budget, we will have all looked at it, liked it, and agreed. So, it'll just be, I think it's going to be a lot cleaner. Plus, my new finance director told me that's the way we're doing it, so I says, okay, you got it. Okay, I met with Weaver State last week, and this was a great meeting. I had an email from the political science professor up there that says, hey, I've got twelve students, they're probably some of my sharpest students that I've had, and we need some projects. And I'm like, I'm your man, we got it, Roy's all in. So, I, I went, I went there last week, and I've got four areas that I'm going to have these students look at. One of them, municipal park. Two, the complex. Three, policies and procedures. And four is a health and wellness program. So, we're going to let these students, for example, the policies and procedures, they'll meet with the city attorney, and we've divided them each accordingly, and we've put their names according to where their, their expertise is, or what field they're going into. So, there's a few attorneys in there that we said, hey, perfect, go with the city attorney, do policies and procedures. There's some parks and rec people, which is perfect for Travis and Jody, for municipal and the complex. So, we've kind of looked at the class, looked at where their expertises are, and we've assigned them to these department directors. And I'm happy to note that Andy has a meeting, is it this Friday? This Friday with the two of the legal students, and it's going to be really great, and we can let them just kind of brainstorm, go to work, and do a lot of the work for us. They're super excited about it, and our deadline is April third. April third, council meeting, we're going to have Weaver State come in, we're probably going to have the media and the newspaper here. It's a big event for Weaver State, it's a big opportunity for these students to come in, look at some of the things we want them to look at, and do a lot of the legwork, and then come to us and say, hey, here's some of our recommendations, these are some of the things that we'd like to see. So, we're really excited about that. Our HR position closed last week. We had thirty-one applicants, which is excellent. So, Matt and I will be interviewing them on Thursday. We've picked, we've gone through the selection, and I think we've picked twelve. We've picked twelve, and we're going to interview those. So, that, that process is in full, in full motion. Our administrative assistant closes tomorrow, and as soon as that close, we'll be going through that process. Mayor Dandoy will be helping us with that. And I gotta, I gotta bring our Parks and Rec Director to the mic. So, Mr. Flint, this is spot, spur of the moment. So, hop up to the mic and tell everybody the exciting news about North Park.
Okay, great. We talked about this at the last city council meeting. Playgrounds arrived. It's here, the playground part of it. They obviously need some time to put it together. We're hoping about a three-week turnaround period. We will then have to do some things, but obviously, as it gets built, we, we want people to use it, so, you know, we're going to have to do some things to secure other areas, but we are real excited about it. As Mayor Dandoy mentioned today, I must be living right, because Mother Nature's been cooperating really nice with us.
I was going to say that, sure, to bring on the snow.
Yeah.
I'm going to walk away from the microphone, because you win some, you lose some, I guess.
Nope, that's good.
No, it, it's good news. Things are going along really well there. We're going to be doing some stuff with the Bowery here in the next month, and also the Misteen splash pad area shortly to fall, so.
Travis, a good question. I got an email last week from Tej's company, and it's just a little YouTube video from the latest park that they put in. Do you know if they're going to plan on doing that with us at all?
He's talked about it, and I've, and I told him I'd have to get with Andy, but I can't see a reason why we wouldn't, you know, want to feature something that we're going to be extremely proud of. You know, so as long as legal, legal supports it, and you guys support it, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I agree. It'd be good.
Yeah, so Bob and I went there today and did a drive-by, and they actually started putting up some of the playground equipment, so, super good. I got confirmation from some of our North Park residents, they're super excited. We will deliver and have that whole complete project done this year, phase one and phase two. So, thanks, Travis, good job. Forty-eight hundred south, twenty-seven hundred west. Councilmember Joe Paul talked with me about this intersection this last week, and he wanted me to do some follow-up. He's pretty passionate about trying to make this a safer intersection. It is, it is in UTA's top ten worst intersections in the state, so for Roy City to take action and say, we don't want it to be in that category, let's work on it, let's fix it. So, I did email the police department and said, hey, send me all the accidents at this intersection over the last two-year period, and it was shocking to see how many accidents were there. So, Public Works Director Oliver and I, we went and met with the engineers, coming up with a way to probably eliminate the left-hand turn on forty-eight hundred south onto twenty-seven hundred west. That is the huge issue, and that's where we're having problems. It is confusing, it is an issue that, that we need to address and fix. That is a Roy road, and we do have the railway going to do some changes and, and put some money and fix that, so we might as well just fix it right and get it done. Another, another issue that's been problematic with creating that left-hand turn on twenty-seven is if you're coming back the opposite way, so if you're coming east, you can't turn left on twenty-six seventy-five. They have to go and turn back around, which is, again, it's problematic, and I'm sure it's an issue for them, too. So, by us eliminating the left-hand turn on twenty-seven, it creates a longer island, which then gives us enough room to go ahead and make that left turn on to twenty-six seventy-five. So, we're in the process, we're meeting with the engineers, the, the head guy for UTA is on board, so I will keep you updated as that comes, but I guess, we don't have a motion or recommend, but strongly recommend, that's a Roy road, we own that road, it's in the top five or ten deadliest roads, let's fix it, we have the opportunity. So, you know, thanks, Councilmember Joe Paul.
Yeah, caveat on that, just make sure we have our ducks in a row there, because it's not our say, it's Union Pacific's say, it's their intersection, so they can do what they want with it. Unfortunately, I don't agree with that, but that's the way it plans out. What you got planned is great, just make sure we have it, and I don't see a problem. They should be able to hopefully accept that.
Okay, and we'll work with all three. We'll work with our Roy representatives, the engineers that represent Roy, UTA, and Pacific, yeah.
Yeah. And I think it's pretty good idea, as we talked earlier, Jason. This really requires public notification. This is going to change a lot of the traffic patterns in that area. The sooner you get an idea, and I don't see Ross, but as soon as you settle in an idea, I think it's really important for us to make sure that we get that up to the public, let them know it's coming, and I'll let you make judgment of how you want to approach that. It is the right thing to do from a safety perspective, so in essence, we need to look at public safety as really a driver here, but I know it's going to change a lot of people the way they drive in that area, and I think they just need to know it's coming.
Yeah, we'll do our due diligence, and we'll get it out to the public through social media, Facebook, our webpage, and then also, we can just get with our standard examiner reporter and get an article out in the paper, and I mean, we'll do everything we can to make sure we get the information out.
Jason, when you get public safety input, I kind of see the chiefs over there looking like, I don't know, you know, because that will make any rescue attempts down there longer if they have to come down from forty-eight instead of twenty-seven, instead of covering-
Yeah, and they got lights and sirens flashing.
Right, but if you close that off, they can't get through there. So, I'm just saying, just make sure, we get their input also.
Okay.
Yeah, good point.
Fifty-five hundred south and forty-three hundred west, we've been working on that little intersection for a street light, and we've made some headways. I think it was just yesterday, they moved one of the poles, so now we can do our thing, and then we'll just be waiting for UDOT, but UDOT has been waiting for this, and it just got done. So, we're excited about that, so that's, that is in the works. We were hoping for last November, but sometimes you get all these representatives in state, we, we'd like to see it done quicker, but there's only so much we can do. But now that that's done, we can do our part, and then it's up to UDOT, come put it in. So, we're excited about that.
Can I just make a comment to that? That whole issue dealing with forty-three hundred and fifty-five hundred was brought because one of the residents stepped up to that microphone and simply says, we have a problem. His comment was simple. He says, I'm kind of tired of picking cars out of my backyard after the crash, and they knocked down his fence, and, and you know, he's right. And so, he came in here, he pleaded his case, and what was important about that, the council simply turned to the experts and said, Aaron, pull the numbers, what do we got here, okay? And through the efforts of, of our police department and the public works, they went to UDOT, who owns those roads. I mean, it was really a UDOT issue. And UDOT simply says, you need a traffic light there. We got, we got issues with children in that area, and we have some issues in terms of how that's being approached. But let me make it clear, okay? It was because a resident stepped up to the microphone and took action, and we really encourage that, because oftentimes, you know what's going on in this city more than we know, and if you're willing to be a voice, we can make a difference. And we're willing to make a difference, but we need that voice. So, again, when this is all said and done, I just want you to know that there's a traffic light going to be put on forty-three hundred and fifty-five hundred down there, and in my opinion, it's going to make a difference, and all the results are because one of the residents stepped up and said it was important. Jason?
So, just an update on the old library, we've talked about the old library, what we'd like to do, some of our options. The first option was, is to move the police department and the courts there. We've lost that idea because it's not big enough, if you can believe that. We have more square footage here than we do at the library, and it's shocking, but we, we pulled, we pulled up the, up the drawings, and it just wasn't going to work. So, we, we met with the police department and their chiefs and our engineer, and we just can't make it work. So, Plan B, we've always got a Plan B. We're looking at, possibly, met with Travis and Jody about putting the recreation department over there. That works beautiful. Travis, I did go over there with Mark Miller today, and he, he has some great ideas for it. He would like to meet with you and, and Jody and myself in the next week or two when he gets the drawings up, but possibly, that's, that's a good move. And then what that's going to do, too, is it may open up that building where they're at now, which we may kind of clean it up a little bit and do some remodeling, and have some of the public works admin go over there, because we have meetings scheduled, and that current layout isn't very great. It's not ADA compliant. Ross was saying they had a meeting there a couple of weeks ago, and they're helping the lady up all these steep stairs, and so we're just trying to fix it, utilize the resources in the buildings that we have to make it better for not only staff, but for the employees and for the, the people that come to these meetings. So, just working on it, and it's going to be a lot less cost to do that, too, so that's going to be, that's another positive.
Question about that, will that fill that whole building?
No.
Or will there be leftover space?
There'll be a little bit of leftover space, but that leftover space is going to be for all of Travis's equipment, all the helmets, pads, all the recreation gear, everything. So, we, we do want to, we do want to remodel it a little bit to kind of get it up to current and to look nice, and he had some really good ideas, Travis, that I think you'll really like, and, and we also own those two water tanks right there, so that's another benefit for the city, is we need to have access into there, so that should be really good. Annexation workshop, and I guess I can kind of tackle that on the follow-up review. So, right now, Steve, our planner, and Jaclyn, Jaclyn's actually here in the audience, raise your hand, Jaclyn. Her and Steve have a good working relation right now, they, they communicate well. I think both of them know the needs of this group. I know we have talked about this for a long time, and we've had our, our debates. I don't know that it's going to be a debate. I think we've, we've eliminated a lot of the, the confusion, and so we're going to let those two work out from both sides, but then, what I'd like to do is I'd like to meet with that group, the annexation people, and Jaclyn and Steve, but if we can go into that meeting knowing on both sides what the expectations are and everything, we're not going to have the issues that we had last year. I firmly believe that, that we want what's best for everybody, and so, just to let you know, we are in the process of that. We will work with them. Jaclyn has a good dialogue with all of those members and sends them out the information, so we want to go live with that, January, so we'll keep you guys apprised on, on the communications and let you know when the workshop will be, so.
I just want to say, that's wonderful. I love the fact that we've got citizen involvement, that, like you says, I think it brings in more transparency and more communication out there, so I think that's wonderful that we put that together.
Jason, where are we at with the county on that? Yeah. Where's the county, are they just waiting to say, okay, yes, we have an agreement, will you guys look it over, then they'll give the approval, say, yes, we want to no longer be, have these islands in the county? Do we know?
Yeah, so I think the county-
They already passed an ordinance of resolution approving that, so now, it's, it's just in our hands at this point, so, but they didn't want us to do it mid-year for, for them to try and calculate all the taxes with every different law that money costs us, so, Ogden City and lawyer both in their annexations, so that it'll be, begin January first of November.
And then, lastly, I'm going to go out on a limb here, and I know I'm going to crucify myself probably, but I, I feel like, I feel like as the, as the city administrator, it, it's my job to talk about this issue, and the issue is social media. I really, I really think we need to use caution and be careful when we use social media. We got a lot of good things going right now, and we got a lot of positive movement with the new mayor and new staff and new city administrator. We were at a legislative meeting yesterday, and some of those key representatives come up and talked to myself and Bob, and said, we've had more Roy involvement in the last five weeks than we've had in a long time. And I think that's a good thing, because it, it should tell our staff and our residents that we're passionate about what we do, we care about everybody, and we're going to go, and we're going to just go full steam and try to take care of things, but I think sometimes we, we get wrapped up and caught up into the social media aspect of it, and then we get into debates, and I just, I guess I'd just say, as administrator, just be careful, you know, because there's, there's, honestly, there's groups of people out there, and it's not just our city, it's every city that we're not going to make happy, and we're trying our best, and I think as a, as a business model, what we need to do is we need to run our city to the majority and the better of the residents and the people, and, and I just, I just felt I needed to say that, so just be careful. Other than that, that's all I got.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Now, it's Mayor and City Council report. Council, any comments, thoughts? Okay, let me just share a thought with you. As it was alluded to, part of this budget process will include the legislative portion of the budget. We've pretty well got the worksheet almost done, I'll have that out to you probably by tomorrow. almost done. I'll have that out to you probably by tomorrow. Please take your time, go through it. I'll hopefully provide enough information. But fundamentally, this portion of the budget is the ones that the council requires to operate under. So you just look at it if you've got questions. I'll try to answer if not. We got an expert with Matt. He can provide a lot of clarity if you have questions on that. But we want to make sure that our portion of the budget requirement is infused then into what Jason and his team is going to be doing in terms of the overall budget. Ultimately, it's, it's not an approval at this point. We're just in a worksheet, but the council will be approached. We will be in work sessions, probably more likely in April. And, but I think Jason and I have talked this issue. We would like to have this budget to the council and ready for approval sometime the first of June, and not necessarily the last. We're required to have this done by the end of June, but, but I think we're, we will be ready to make this happen at the first, and I think that'll make it a lot easier for everybody. Okay? Any other comments, thoughts? Okay. Just follow-up items. Can you talk, Jason, a little bit about the newsletter ideas you've got there?
Yeah, I'm going to have our, our finance director come up to the mic on the spot, and just kind of talk about the monthly newsletter. I kind of know we want to start March, is that right? March, April, if we can get.
Yeah. Currently, we do it every other month, and you guys know. And there's a couple of different options that we could take. We have the express bill pay system, that we could shoot emails out and do soft copies to people that elect to do that. Right now, there's only a thousand people out of roughly 11,000 accounts that elect only soft copy. We have a lot more emails, and now we could try, try to push that a little bit more. If we want to do monthly newsletters, the cost is going to be in postage. The cost right now with postage, obviously, is like $0.38. But if we go, the printing of it is like 11 cents to 13 cents, depending on color, black and white copies. But anyway, so count on about $30,000 a year if you wanted to go every other month, or every month instead of every other month.
Matt, do people know how to opt-in to soft copies?
It's on the express bill pay system. Every time we get a bill, there's a little note at the bottom that says that that's where you go to, and you can, or you, you could even call in. They could call in a utility office, and they can do it as well.
And maybe what Jan's suggesting is maybe Jennifer, I'm reading it, is maybe we could put something in the, the next newsletter, or some kind of information to, to give them that information, to see if maybe we can get more.
Generate more interest in a soft copy than.
Exactly, to subscribe to that.
I think a lot of people just don't understand that they, that's something they can do.
What does it cost right now, then, Matt? 15?
For the newsletter?
Yes.
About $1,500, yes.
So, what we want to do is get the information out every month, because when we do it every other month, we get into months where we miss important things, and the residents are like, hey, we want to hear, we want to see it every month. And I don't know that there's too many cities that do, that do this every other month, you know? So, you know, we're trying to get it up, and we're trying to do the colorful copies and not just the blue piece of paper. So we're trying to enhance it. We're trying to make it better. Just letting you know, we went through the new RFP with the mailing service, and, and we can do it. We're just, we're just kind of figuring out where we want to go with it. But we'd like to start live coming March, April.
Does that change the billing to a monthly billing as well, or just the newsletter?
So that's a super good question. Our, our goal is to do it monthly. But the, the meters is the issue. So, right now, we're, we're in the process of giving all of our meters an overhaul. So every single meter needs to be changed out. So the way we're doing it now is we send staff, and they walk the yards and do a, a meter read on every single yard. Well, if we went to monthly billing, it'd take us three weeks to do it. So they'd be, they'd just be walking the yards every single day. So we're changing.
It's good exercise.
Yeah, it's really good. So we're changing those out, so they can just drive by, and all of the data just dumps into a computer software system. And that's where we're in the process. Once we get the meters done, we will go to a monthly newsletter with the monthly bill. That's the goal.
What's your timeframe on the meter change out?
Well, over, it, the whole process was like a five-year process. And that's been about two years ago. But we've had some really good weather. We've just ordered another batch of meters. So I'm hoping by a year and a half to two years, we get it all, everything done, and we can start cranking it out every month. It's the, with the meters, it's an issue.
That's correct. And one thing along that line, some of the residents are having a little concern after the meters change out. They're finding some less-than-clear water that's coming through. This, Jason and his team's going to put a note in the newsletter, just let everybody know that the meters are being changed. As a result, you'll probably need to flush that water through the system, because they are separating it, and it may create some of that debris through there. Flush it for about 10 minutes or so to clear it right out, and we should be in pretty good shape. Anything else?
YCC Funding, we sent the check. So thanks, Matt. Yeah, we sent the check to YCC Funding and all that. You're up to date.
Yeah. And do you want to talk just briefly, a last one, in terms of what's our next step on the complex proposals?
Couple of things. I'll, I'll talk about it for a sec. Jason, if you can give me this a little bit. Obviously, Jason mentioned the tie-in with the Weber State, but that's an area we're going to explore with it a little bit. I, I don't, I, I personally didn't love any of the options that we discussed. I think there's things there that, that we should have a, what they call it, a visioning session. I, I've had conversations with a few cities that are, have been in the same situation we're in. And it would be a visioning session to say, what do we want to be about, and how do we do it with our current situation? How do we do it potentially upgrading it? How do we do it potentially building a new one? And it would be my recommendation that we use a scenario of using this Weber State study, as well as setting up a visioning session to move forward.
Okay. And I think that's reasonable. I, I just, it just gives us some options, some things to consider. And, and from that, I think, and I can't speak for the council, I can speak for me, the city, just take what you need, figure out what you think's best, and then let's have either a work session, so that the council can kind of see the way ahead for that facility.
Yeah, and I think that makes good sense. In the last presentation we had on the complex, you had a one, a three, and a $5 million scenario, and you also had a $29 million scenario, $20 million scenario to bond. That's a lot of money, which would be about $1 million a year as a bond payment. I don't know that we could sustain that. If you look at the one, three, and the $5 million, you know, overhauls, you heard the lady say, it's not going to bring you much revenue. So from a business standpoint, it doesn't make sense to dump a million, or 3 million, or 5 million. If we still have parking issues, and it's still not going to bring us in revenue, that, that doesn't make sense either. So, we're just going to the next part of the drawing board and have some Weber State students maybe look at the Aquatic Center and some of our options around the Aquatic Center that's central in our city, that gives us some option, because we actually have about 17 acres of land around that swimming pool that is already a destination spot. So can we maybe do something down there where we've got lots of land, lots of parking, it's central, and everybody knows about it? So that's kind of where we're going.
Have we looked at a partnership with other cities? There, there's been conversations I've had with Brock Randall from West Haven City, as well as representatives from Riverdale. And, and I, I think these are all great ideas. And for me, the importance is, that's where we sit in a room, and we start having these conversations of how we want to explore things, what we want to do with those things, and how we go about it. Because I think it's a great suggestion and a great notion. I, I think Jason's got some real exciting ideas down in the Aquatic Center, neck of the woods. But I, I think it's important that we, we have those kind of visioning sessions and say, what do we want to be about, and how do we want to go about doing this? Because the, the, the complex in, in its current state does provide a lot of people a lot of great services. And it is important to me that we stay a city that provides these kind of services to people. And, and so I, I think we need to follow this next step with the students at Weber State, as well as set up a work session sometime in the near future, where we can decide what we want to be and how we want to, how we want to go about doing it.
Have we, have we talked with Weber School District yet?
Yeah, I, I've constantly in conversations with Matt Williams at Roy Junior High. He's the one who Jeff Stevens has asked to kind of, you know, be the point for the school district right now. And, and we're working on some stuff. He, he and I have played around with some stuff, and, and we're not, I'm not ready to unveil it. He's not ready to unveil it with his bosses yet, but it's, conversations are definitely happening.
That's encouraging.
Okay. Anything else, Council? Having seen that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And thank you for attending. We appreciate your attendance here.